Okay, Mr. Chair.
Okay. What I'd like to do is open up the meeting for the first one, which is the 269 Blackhawk At this point, I'd like to waive the public reading. It was published into the annual, is that correct?
Yeah, it was published on November 25th in the landmark and appropriate man was was done to the surrounding property.
Okay, great. Do we have the petitioner, Jack Shea, from Victoria General Contractors here? Would you like to give us any kind of input or anything that you would like to do with the property and so forth?
If we could, if we could have you come forward and we'll swear you in as well.
Come forward.
Yeah. Where's the podium?
Oh, it's behind me.
Okay. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes.
So what would you like to tell us about the fact that you'd like to subdivide 269 Blackhawk?
Well, where do I begin? I just want, you know, the funny thing is I could probably start. I went through this whole thing before in the rain. I bought a double lot on Poplin. This is about a year ago, two years ago, actually. You know, I had the same thing. After I bought the lot, it surfaced that, oh, this is, you know, we have to build the two houses here. So after months and months and months of lawyers and, you know, going around the block with the village and stuff, they finally let us build. The issue was a little different. It was already, you know, it was a, but it was one lot that they had to buy, but the water was there anyway. The neighbors, you know, flooding and all that stuff. But I understand it's very sensitive.
And where was this? Where was this?
This was on Poplin, 42 and 45 Poplin on the range.
Okay.
And, you know, like a little wooded lot, and the guy behind us owned it, so, you know, after several, and I have no problem with what the neighbors in the village, you know, I know that's a real sensitive issue with people with flooding and stuff, you know, that's very sensitive to the, you know, issue. So we had meetings, several meetings with all the neighbors and stuff. Finally worked it out. We kind of burned a sewer and made shut off, you know, stuff like that. But anyway, long story short, we built the two houses. They all sold, everyone lived happily ever after. So that, that ended up good. So this same thing here on Blackhawk, I went into the village and said, is this able, am I able to do this? So, you know, it's not something, sure there are problems underfoot and, you know, you should, because I don't want to get into the same issue like I am right now. So I proceeded forward, bought lots on the assumption of, you know, there's no other lot, anything else, not Scottsboro or Maplewood, it's Blackhawk. Everything behind is ranches and bungalows. So we proceeded to purchase the property. I went through an online, you know, subdivision plat, all that stuff, and, you know, I hope you all have it, so I'm here, but talked to all the neighbors, I mean, any neighbor that I ran into, and, you know, no one has a problem with it and how I am four months later. So I'm hoping you'll...
I have a neighbor, I didn't see you.
I don't even know who you are, so I apologize if I didn't meet you yet. But, you know, neighbors next door to me, both sides, across the street, the guy directly behind me. So, you know, again, I know water's a big issue with everybody and, you know, we've been around the block before, it's, you know, it's not our first rodeo, so, you know, we do any, any steps we can to prevent flooding and, you know, I have no problem with anything that we're doing. People are showing us what we're going to do so far, but, you know, that's usually the biggest thing about building houses, the flooding, so. But other than that, I mean, that is basically it.
Okay. Well, thank you. When I put the podium there, I forgot about the camera. Are you having tough angles?
Sorry.
All right, why don't you shift over to the...
I need the hallway.
Or maybe over here?
Yeah. So you're not fighting the wires.
Perfect.
So what I'd like to do then is open it up to comment from the staff, if you're done.
Do we open it up to the rest of the public?
You want to do the public first?
What questions from the commissioners?
Okay. Let's sit down. That's the staff.
Okay. Well, in a second. I just have one question. Is this lot the way it is? Is this one of the original platted lots?
Based on the legal description, it appears to be.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Jill? Any? Teresa?
Shall I go?
Yeah.
Just to go over some of the basics, we have the subject property, which is at 269 Blackhawk. It is zoned R1A, and the house on this property is not a historic landmark. The property owner is proposing to demolish the existing structure and subdivide the property into two buildable lots. The preservation ordinance requires that any application for demolition of a residential building be reviewed by them. They did review this at their preservation meeting on the 10th, and they did recommend approval of the demolition. They did not find that the house had architectural merits based on our code, and so it will not be going through the landmarking process. The bulk requirements for the R1A are that the minimum lot area is 7,000 square feet and the minimum lot frontage is 50 feet. The proposed lots will be 7,825 square feet and the other one 7,830 square feet. The minimum lot frontage for the lots will be 49.99 feet. There is a note in our bulk table requirements stating that all new lots created through subdivision must meet the lot frontage and lot requirements. However, when the lot frontage of an existing lot of record indicated on the WPA map is sufficient to subdivide the lot into two or more conforming lots in compliance with the regulations of the district in which they are located, but such lot of record does not meet the lot frontage requirements. When surveyed, such lot may be subdivided as evenly as possible between the new lots, and the lot frontage of each new lot must be within two inches of the required lot frontage. So in this case, these proposed lots are within one quarter inch of the required minimum lot frontage of 50 feet. So the lot was recorded as 100, but as measured, it seems to be about 99.99 feet. So meets that minimum requirement. The petitioner is proposing a 26 and a half foot front building line for the subdivision. The setback of the existing house is 26.45 feet, and the existing setbacks for the adjacent houses are 21 feet and 26 feet. So that meets our ordinance requirements. The existing structure must be removed in order to subdivide the property. You have a copy of the plat of survey that does show the proposed property lines. You can see where the existing house falls and where that division will be. In addition, the petitioner's surveyor is requesting that the requirement for the easement provision statements for all private utility companies to be signed by the utilities be waived. He states the requirement is not really applicable to a small two-lot re-subdivision and is a bit burdensome for the owner to obtain those signatures. So he is asking for a waiver from that requirement from our subdivision regulations.
Can you say that first?
In our subdivision requirements, it requires statements of all private utility companies, the provisions to be signed by the utilities. They're supposed to be a provision statement as well as being signed off by each of the utilities. In this case, he's asking for a waiver from that requirement due to it being burdensome.
That's just because when, for a lot, for two lots, it's definitely not needed. When you're doing like 500 lots, you know, that's when you have to go get out, you know, so the utilities aren't crossing over each other. So for two lots, it's no...
It's always serviced by the utilities. It does have, it has the state house on there, so.
So, but that is technically a requirement in the subdivision order, so they are asking for a waiver from that. You have copies of the bulk requirements table for your reference, as well as a copy of the plat of subdivision and that plat of survey that shows the division line. Staff does recommend approval of the subdivision, subject to village and staff, village attorney and staff approval of the final plat, and village engineer and staff approval of the grading plans. At this point, the village engineer has approved the grading plan that was submitted. So additionally, the preservation commission did review this and looked at the demolition as well as the subdivision and made, looked at the subdivision just based on their preservation ordinance and whether or not the subdivision would have a negative impact on the general plan or our landmark designation. And in reviewing that, they did not feel that the proposed subdivision was out of character for the neighborhood. However, they felt that the preservation ordinance does compel them to be protecting the originally platted lots, and therefore they felt they needed to recommend denial of the subdivision. So in their review, that was their recommendation. Before you, you were looking at the subdivision and making your recommendation based on it meeting the zoning ordinance requirements and the subdivision regulations. And so you have copies of those attached to your staff report for reference as we discuss this, and your recommendation will go to the village board as well as a record of the public hearing.
Further comments now from commission? So was there overall, as far as preservation, they had indicated that it wouldn't have detrimental...
Impact on the neighborhood.
On the neighborhood or the character of the area.
Mm-hmm.
The type of houses that you're, you're planning to build there, could you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Sure. Yeah, I was going to bring it up, I forgot, but yeah, you know, I've, I've been building in this town since when the market was really hot, that's when I started out here, but I live in town, love the town since I was this big, and anything I do, I try to make it in character. And I'm very sensitive with this, you know, hence the Victorian contractor. I started out as Victorian painters in the 80s. I painted every big house in this town, every big one at least once. I love the houses, I, you know, totally in with it. I, I get it. I'm trying to create waves. I know you gotta walk on eggs a lot with neighbors and stuff. So yeah, the houses I have proposed, I have blueprints, you know, some whatever I have with me, but yeah, they would fit, you know, one's going to be like all Cedar Shake, Clavert style, with the columns, you know, very, you know, fit right in. I'm not building monsters. The other one's going to be a little different. I don't want them to look like two cookie cutters, you know. Again, a little stonework, break it up. So yeah, they would, you know, I'd be more than glad to share.
Well, I'm, I'm just kind of curious, like, what kind of style, because a lot of times people are concerned that, you know, we end up going there, you end up building, maxing out the lot as much as you can, and the fact is, is that now they're sitting next door to two very large houses...
Right, right.
That, once again, didn't exist before, but now, because of just anything, they're, they're actually, you've now maxed them all out. And that's why I was asking, what type of character, you know, how big are the houses that you're planning on trying to put on that lot? Are they two stories or are they one story?
Yeah, they're all two stories, approximately 2,500 square foot. Front lawn garage, because I like to give them more of a yard. Everybody, and I've got an interest already, you know, some of the realtors are already in town, but everybody loves a yard for the kids. They love the attached garage, because they come in, go right into the mudroom. That's another big thing, mudrooms are hot. You know, but yeah, I'm, you know, I sit, I look at the neighborhood, I look at the houses around me, down to the colors, you know, I try to make sure I don't, if there's five yellow houses on the block, I'm not going to put a yellow house, but I'll try to do something in a cream that will match or complement the neighbors, and same with the roof. You know, I'm real detail oriented, so I try to.
Okay.
So approximately 50% of the frontage would be a two-car garage? Is that what you're doing?
No, it's, the rule is, but, you know, the garage cannot be bigger than the front.
It can't be more than 50%.
Correct, so, you know.
Okay.
Well, I guess, but your, your question really wasn't answered, which was...
Well, you're, I mean, you've got a 50-foot lot, you've got your setbacks, and then you put up a two-car garage, you're eating up approximately 50% of the frontage left.
Well, that or else, if the garage is faced a different way...
Right.
You can do a side load garage.
You can side load the garage.
And that might be tough, this one.
With a 50-foot...
With a 50-foot lot, that's pretty tough, because you're eating up half, yeah.
And the, the adjacent lots are basically 50-foot lots, kind of the whole neighborhood are 50-foot lots.
And it's just one of the last big lots on that street. It's kind of what intrigued me, I guess, when I bought it, or was interesting, it was, you know, huge lot, and I, you know, drove down the block, and, you know, Blackhawk's a nice street, because you're walked out everything, they're all nice streets around here, to be honest with you. You're close to town, but as I'm driving down there, yeah, they're all 50 wide, every, every lot, and then I see this big yellow house, which is kind of a nice store, because it's pretty run down now, and, you know, so that is the only big one around there, though.
Mr. Chair, any speculation on what trees can be saved?
Yeah, again, I'm a big fan of trees, so I save every tree I can, to the point of, I will build right next to a tree and have the carpenters trim it as they're going, like the arborist here. I brought him out on some of my jobs, and he said, walk the lot, and you can tell me, is this, what is this? Is it a good tree? Is it, you know, that's, get rid of that. That you'll have to get rid of, it's an, you know, emerald. This one's good, you know, ash tree, whatever, but, so I bring him out, and, you know, he's helped me on, you know, occasion to do that, but yeah, I'll try to save every tree I can, you know, as far as it's not the overdigger, gonna get killed in a year too far on the neighbor, you know what I mean, so.
Are there trees really in that front area?
I'm sorry.
Is there any trees in that front area?
No, I think there is one on the existing property now, which again, I would leave, because it's not, the house right now has the drive on the left side, so I don't know my north-south from here, but I would leave that tree, because the driveway can go next to it, and there's nothing, the other one's open, but there's a lot of big trees down the side of it. And again, depending on how we do it, I'd like to keep whatever I could. We'll trim them up and stuff, of course, so.
Okay. Jill, anything else?
I'd like to hear if any public wanted to comment.
I'll get the, to the public before we're done. We did have, well, I will open it up to the public. I also do have two memos written to the plan commission that we can read, but if there is anybody in the public that would like to stand up and comment. Is there anybody out? Yes? Do you want to stand up, give us your name, address?
Yes, I'm Carol Brown, P-R-O-U-K, 277, P-R-O-U-K, 277 Blackhawk. When I first moved into River...
If we could, raise your right hand.
What?
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes, I will, too, nothing but the truth. When I first moved into Riverside in 1977, our downtown was a quaint little village, and I appreciated that, and that's one of the reasons I moved into Riverside. Within the last few years, there's a monstrosity now in downtown Riverside. Two blocks further east were some nice apartment buildings that were knocked down, and there are townhouses there, monstrosities, again. Across from me on Lionel, when I look out my back door, nerd, is McMansion. Where, where were the zoning board then, when these monstrosities were coming in? I thought, and I don't even want to say Olmstead's name, although I did, I don't care about Olmstead, I care about me, and walking through Riverside, and driving through Riverside, and having my friends come to Riverside, and seeing Riverside for what it was supposed to be, a park. It's, it's losing its effect. It's not what it was originally when I moved in, certainly. I'm, I'm seeing all this modern construction with glass and brick, and it, it's not appealing to me anymore. And I had to say that, maybe in five years, I'll be in a retirement home, so by then it won't matter to me, but maybe the young people moving in, although I don't see any of them here tonight, so I, I don't understand why they're not here, but that's my spiel for whatever it is.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to comment? You'd like me to read the two? Yeah. There are two, two memos written, one of them to chairperson Paul Cuchera. I'll read it. "We are residents of Riverside for over 25 years. We moved here because of the unique architecture and open space surrounding each individual home. We live at 272 Blackhawk, across the street from the proposed zoning change lot 230, known as 269 Blackhawk Road. We would like to, like it known that we oppose subdividing that lot. We believe the change will dramatically affect the aesthetics that the original village designer, Olmstead, had intended for this quaint town of Riverside. We appreciate your consideration." Kevin and...
Danita.
Danita Reardon of 277 Blackhawk Road.
272.
272, excuse me. And we also have another one. This is also to Paul Cuchera, chairperson. "My wife and I strongly, are strongly against the division of the current 269 Blackhawk Road into two parcels for the following reasons. Riverside is like a forest or a park within a city. Riverside should be kept, this, should keep this sense of openness wherever possible. Two, Frederick Olmstead designed for Riverside included many parks and open spaces. Three, each Riverside house is unique. Each land parcel is different in size and configuration. This should not be compromised. Four, the aesthetics of two houses on the property of 269 Blackhawk Road will bring an additional family and eliminate some of the openness on the road. Five, the lot is, is a deep lot, and even maintaining the required building-to-land ratio of two houses could be built very close together, further destroying the feeling of openness. Six, there is a precedence in Riverside for not splitting lots to allow for multiple houses. Seven, personally, I would, would also like to have the building size limited to fit in with the, the other houses of the neighborhood. We strongly recommend that you do not approve dividing the property in order to construct two homes. John Zedenek of 289 Blackhawk Road in Riverside, and Sue, Mary Sue Zedenek. Thank you. Those are the two. So I'd like to continue now the discussion with the commissioners and your thoughts about what you think about the subdivision. Greg, start even with yourself, just kind of go around and get it started.
Well, I'm, I'm, in general, I guess I'm opposed to it, just partially on the principle that we, a couple months ago, we denied another subdivision because it was an originally platted lot, and I sort of feel like we'd be reneging on that and potentially opening up that can of worms again. From a scale perspective, I, I don't object to it, simply because the lots, you know, it'd be in keeping with the rest of the lots that were, I guess, at one point, they were all bigger lots, and they've all been subdivided along the way. So I'm kind of torn about this, and I guess my biggest principle is trying not to reneg on our previous decision affecting 225 on common, so.
Before we get further into the discussion, if we can have any final questions for the public, and then we can close the public hearing, continue the discussion. Does anyone have any more questions?
Yes, I do have a question. Could this be just another reason to rake in more tax money in property taxes, having another house there?
That is not something typically we would consider, us as the plan commission, to think about that, between the aesthetics and, and if it is allowable or not.
Okay.
Any more questions?
All right.
Close the public hearing.
Take a motion to close the public hearing?
Third.
Second.
Second.
All right, the public hearing is now closed. I'll open it up to comments.
We just lose my comments, we go from one side.
And Teresa, your thoughts, please.
Well, just to speak to Greg's comment, I guess, I'm not under the impression that the reason that we denied 225 was because it was an originally platted lot. That was one of the considerations, but there were several other items that it did not meet, which is having the lot subdivided into two equal parcels. It was not a complete survey that we were provided, there were pieces of information missing. So we, we, that, to me, that was the main reason, was the, the other, you know, the points, the, the even lots. So I don't think in any way our accepting this would go against that decision. I think it's the only lot in the whole neighborhood that is of the size that it is, so, you know, recognizing that it is an originally platted lot, and that that's important, and I understand why we might want to protect those. In this instance, I feel like the reason for protecting it has been lost, because it's the only one in the neighborhood that's left. So really, for him to subdivide, it would fit within the neighborhood the way it is. So looking at the requirements and the intent of our subdivision ordinance, I feel like this proposed subdivision really meets all of them without exception. So I would recommend that we approve it.
Jill, I'd like to hear your comments.
I would echo what Teresa says. Whether it's an originally platted lot is not part of Chapter 8, so it's not for us to consider. And according to the subdivision regulations, this proposed subdivision meets them. It's equal size to the quarter inch almost, and a straight line, which 225 did not have. So I don't see a reason here for our commission to recommend against approving it.
I myself feel the same as, as probably Teresa and Jill on this one, is that it is a, a lot, it is probably the only lot out there. I guess my concern would only be, and though it's not part of, the decision is really the size and the character of how it impacts the other houses to it. And unfortunately, that's something that we can't really discuss or require. So, and you're kind of, you're just taking a leap of faith that it isn't just a matter of building the biggest thing that I can, the simplest, because one of the things that always, my, I think the thing that brought me even to Riverside was the character. And I think in some cases, the character gets lost when people want to just plow And I think in some cases, the character gets lost when people want to just plop a house down. I mean, there are a lot of, a lot of great houses here that have been done right, and then there's the other ones where you look at and say, you know, that could be just about any place in any western suburb. And so I guess that's probably my biggest concern is always, how do I, you know, how am I affecting the neighbors that are next to it? And, you know, what is the outcome really going to be? I mean, right now, it is a very big lot, a very nice lot. But I also understand that it isn't, you know, it's not maple wood, it's not really what I would call the first subdivision in terms of where you have the very big houses, multiple double lots and so forth. So I'm a little bit torn in between Greg and Teresa here to say, would I, do I think this is something to do? I was not here for the other discussion of the subdivision on the other property. I think the two properties, those, because I'm very familiar with them, it isn't the same. These are two different types of properties. So, you know, with that said, I don't necessarily say I would be against the subdivision on this one.
Now, like I said, I'm not, in principle, I'm not opposed because, like, it does meet all of our zoning requirements, you know? I just worry about the backlash from denying another one. And I do think that lot at 225, I think the lot does speak to the house as much, you know, this one, the house is coming down, so it becomes even less of a historical issue. But I just, I worry about that backlash, you know?
Just for the record, the 225 application was recommended for denial by this commission, but it was withdrawn prior to board action, so.
Sure. No, I understand.
Really was no decision ultimately. And before we get in any further and get to the motion, I wanted to note for the record, we're going to mark as exhibits for this public hearing the public hearing notice, the application for subdivision, and the two letters in opposition. And I also wanted to remind the commission to talk about the request for variation on the plat before you make a motion, which is relative to the utilities.
The utilities.
He's been saying. And, you know, Sonia and I looked at that just for what it's worth, I mean, you know, we essentially agree with the petitioner, that's an unusual requirement for a two-lot subdivision.
Sure.
And sort of facilitates a lot of running around by the surveyor and the applicant in order to get those.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, I think that's a little bit heavy-handed.
I think that would probably make sense to find out, first of all, if we would agree with it, if we do, then we can make a motion, potentially on waiving that requirement. So be it that nobody else is really here to comment, and there was nothing from many of the other commissioners in regards to it.
Commissioner Mendoza did email me and said he had no issues with the proposed subdivision for this matter. Then, that's what he would say if he were here to do that, so just for your informational purposes.
So any other comments or questions? Anybody like to make a motion?
I would move that we approve the plat as submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second recommending approval.
Can we take a vote?
All righty. Commissioner Palitier?
Um.
Commissioner Randall?
Aye.
Commissioner Mateo?
Aye.
Commissioner Lozniak?
Aye.
Okay.
I would like to wonder if anybody would like to make a motion to waive the utility...
Signature.
Signature requirement.
Salute. Is that good enough?
Yeah. And again, this is a recommendation of the board.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right. Just for the benefit of the public, this is just a recommending body. The Board of Trustees has the final decision-making authority, so favorable recommendation regarding the subdivision application will go to the board for a future meeting.
Can I make a motion to adjourn this one and move into the next one?
Yes.
Is there a motion to end this public hearing and move into our next public hearing?
It's moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This public hearing for the subdivision of 269 Blackhawk is concluded. We will, we do have another public hearing. This is for the text amendment, accessory building height regulations and related definitions. I'd like to open up the public hearing. We don't have to call for another.
No, you already did.
I also would like to waive this public reading. Sonia, this was published and...
Yes, it was also published on November 25th. Landmark, you have a copy of the publication, the certification that it was published, and that is the only requirement for a text amendment, so that's what was done.
Is there any other comments?
Do you want me to go over the, do you want me to go over the, do you want me to go over the text amendment and then we can open it up to the, for comment? All righty. What we're looking at is a text amendment to our accessory structures and residential district regulations, so that is 10-7-3A6, and then also at 10-11-4, other terms defined, which is in the definitions, and this is in regards to sidewalls and sidewall height and other conforming changes as necessary. The ordinance currently includes restrictions to the peak height and sidewall height for detached accessory structures. The village proposes to clarify that accessory structures in residential districts are restricted to one-story in height. Additional options include deleting the sidewall height requirement for detached accessory structures or adding definitions to define sidewalls and sidewall height in order to further clarify the restrictions on accessory structures. The Plan and Zoning Commission, as you know, was reviewing a variance request regarding a garage, and the sidewall height as well as the peak height came into play as part of that discussion. Based on that discussion, you had asked me to try and clarify the definition of sidewall and sidewall height, and so you have before you text amendment A, a draft text amendment A, which provides for a definition for sidewall. Says, "An exterior wall on which the roof rafters or trusses sit. Sidewalls shall not include the walls of gable ends or gambrel ends." And then there's a figure that references, you figure 20 for illustration of sidewalls. And so the sidewalls for the different roof types are labeled. Additionally, there's a definition in there for sidewall height, and here it says, "The height of a sidewall shall be measured from the grade adjacent to the structure to the top plate of the wall. Where there are dormers, if the combined width of the dormers exceeds 15 feet or one-half of the width of the sidewall's facade, whichever is less, the face of the dormer shall be included in the height of the sidewall." And then there is an illustration there of a garage without a dormer, how you measure the sidewall height, and then one with a dormer, that's the 50% or more of the facade, and how you would measure, where you would measure that height to. In addition to that, there would be the clarification that under 10-7-3A6, that detached accessory structures shall be limited to one story. And then, in the next one, where it references the peak height and the sidewall height, we would add, "As measured in accordance with definition for sidewall height." So those are the proposed changes for draft text amendment A, which was your direction to staff regarding sidewall height. In the meantime, the village board reviewed your recommendation for denial for the garage variation at 241 gauge. As a result of that discussion, they have said that they would like a public hearing held on amending the restrictions on accessory building height to eliminate the sidewall height restriction in order to allow a little bit more flexibility for people to be more creative with how they're storing their vehicles without increasing the footprint of their garage. So you have also before you text amendment B, which still has the... Pardon me. Uh-uh. Where's my text amendment B? Apologize, my copy seems to have skipped it. Let's see. Do you have it? Thank you very much. I apologize. It still has the addition of clarifying that detached accessory structures shall be limited to one story. However, it eliminates the sidewall height, so it would read that the maximum height of any detached accessory structure shall be 16 feet, as measured to the peak of the roof, except in the R1AA and R1A districts, where a detached garage not to exceed 18 feet in height, as measured to the peak of the roof, may be permitted to enable the roof pitch of the garage to match the roof pitch of an existing home, except in the case of a flat roof. So that would restrict that a flat roof structure would not be allowed to go up to 18 feet, they would be restricted to the 16-foot height. So those are the two proposed draft text amendments before you to consider and make a recommendation on. Additionally, the preservation ordinance does require that the preservation commission review any proposed text amendments to the zoning ordinance, so they also reviewed this at their last meeting on December 10th, and in reviewing it, they did not find that either of the proposed draft text amendments would have impact on the general plan or our national landmark status. So that was their finding on either of the proposed text amendments. So that is, that's it.
So I'd like to open it up then to staff, or to basically the commissioners here for discussion. Jill, I'm going to start with you since you were at that end, so.
I have a question for Attorney Morris. Since this is a public hearing, are we allowed to make any changes to either of the proposed amendments?
Yes.
Excellent. I mean, I like the homework that you did, Sonia, looking at other villages and their heights.
Oh, yes. I forgot to mention that, that you did have some of the other communities and how they regulate accessory structure height to reference.
20 feet, no park, good lord.
Yeah, just to elaborate, Commissioner Mateo, we worded, given that there was two different amendments, we worded the public hearing notice fairly broadly in order to give you guys flexibility, so you're certainly allowed to make changes.
Appreciate that. As we discussed at one of our many meetings about this, you said that the 12 feet seemed to be arbitrary. We discussed whether to change that, and we didn't seem to be in favor of it at the time, but we were in favor of keeping a height in there. And at least one contractor I spoke to said, "No, you thought it should, there should be a height limitation." So I'm still in favor of keeping it in there rather than getting rid of it altogether. I don't see any reason to not consider increasing it at this point, a little bit higher, given that we are on the short side of our neighbors.
In terms of the overall maximum height to the peak, or are you talking about getting rid of the sidewall? So you basically increased the sidewall from 12 foot to something else?
To something else. Don't ask me what, I think that something else should be right now, because I'm undecided. Keep taking averages. Not 20 and not 18.
I just want to point out, you know, the additional zoning codes were very helpful, but on most of them, I couldn't find what the setback was measured to or what the setback was, except for one of them in La Grange Park. Their setback is actually measured to the eve. So ours is measured to the foundation, which would be the wall. So that kind of automatically puts the building closer to the property line, and also, as I pointed out at the last meeting, I know there wasn't a concern, I continue to have a concern with the fact that we do not have an offset to the eve, so the eve can actually go to the property lines. Conceivably, two roofs could be abutting each other, could be touching, actually. So just to that extent, you know, the heights of our neighbors, what they're allowing, it may be that they're requiring them to be further from the property line, which I think would be a reason to maybe increase the height. So one thing I would like to maybe propose is that we give height credits for additional setback. There was one of the zoning codes that had that, where they would allow an extra height of foot for a foot of setback. So that's something that we could maybe consider, and I think that would be a better alternative to simply increasing the height. We personally have, or I personally have a garage that is a flat roof, and we adhere to the 12-foot restriction. It is not, you know, it's not very restrictive, in my opinion, so.
Yeah, I would agree. I don't think the 12-foot is that restrictive. I mean, like I said, on the way over, I measured the front facade of metal lights, and it's 14 feet, and that's a big facade. And if that was three feet off my property line, I'd feel like I was up against the Berlin Wall. I mean, that's big enough that you can mount a backboard on for a basketball hoop and still have room to spare above it. So I just think going beyond 12 feet is too much for an accessory structure, personally. But I wouldn't want something that big next to my house, so. I guess I'm more in favor of text amendment A. I think it's thorough, I think it's very explicit, and it doesn't get us into housing semi-trucks, tractor, trailers on properties, you know? Or half-court basketball courts.
Okay. Any other comments? I mean, my comment is the same, I mean, in terms of, the 12-foot height, it may have seemed arbitrary, unless you were here probably when they were doing it. And it wasn't because it tends to be, everything tended to be a big discussion of, well, what of this and what about that? And I think it was a compromise, again, to what the height would be, because normally I would think that you would be at eight foot to 10 foot max, usually on a typical sidewall. And this was to allow potentially, not necessarily a truck, but a larger truck to fit in a garage. It was never thought about to have, like the last petitioner, was to have two cars stacked on top of each other. So I think, you know, again, I looked at it, and one of the questions that I had asked and I had, when Sonia sent out requesting comments, and one of my things was, you know, what is actually wrong with the zoning code that we actually have? You know, why does it need to change? I mean, it's not something that I think because something doesn't work, that it means automatically, let's start changing it. You know, there's a lot, unfortunately, because Riverside is so unique, in my opinion, that you're trying to compromise a lot of different things. And, you know, I would agree that taking away the sidewall and having a very large sidewall would be, well, again, I look at it, how it affects the neighbors, because just like what we were looking at on the 50-foot lot, I mean, if you're not living on a 100-foot lot, it's maybe not as noticeable. When you're living on a 50-foot lot, all of a sudden, it starts to become very noticeable. So I myself would be in favor of A as an amendment, if we wanted to change it. I'm personally not a fan of even just changing it, but I think if we had to, I would say, you know, if the group itself said, you know, I would like to move that we do make a change, I would hope that it may be A, and I would vote for that. But I'd also would be one to say that there has to be some types of limitations. I like your idea, especially about the setbacks and the heights. I think that's something, but that would actually take us to start looking at how we actually do that, study it so the fact is, again, we create maximums and minimums, which I don't have a problem doing. If that's something that the other commissioners would like to even, you know, think about to say, okay, is there a ratio that, you know what, if you want to build this, then you have to be this far away from the property line? you have to be this far away from the property line? And it gives people an option to decide, you know, do they want to lose more of their backyard to create a larger garage? But yet I, I'd still say there has to be limits set upon it. It just couldn't be that the guy can say, okay, I'm going to take up half my backyard because I want to build a big garage. So that's my comment. I mean, is there any kind of potential interest in looking at a ratio? Jill, I'm going to perhaps start with you, since Teresa brought it up. I mean, would you have any interest in looking at that?
I don't have, I don't have anything against it.
Okay.
I don't know. I just, I like, it is simple. Simple.
Well, it's always easier.
Because, because I think we're getting up to more, more hearings. I don't know. It just seems like we're gonna, you know, I mean, we saw what happened, New York City air riots. You know, the farther you come up from your side yards, higher you go up. And, you know, I mean, I kind of think some of those ideas are interesting, because I think if you could reduce the footprint of your house and be allowed to get taller, you know, you could have, you know, some interesting homes. But that's, that's a different discussion altogether. So, I mean, I think as far as the garages go, I, I like the fact that we're clarifying some confusion that was about what sidewalls were, just formalizing those definitions. But I, I mean, I would, I would be opposed to raising that higher than 12, unless like we get into ratios and it comes off 10 feet from, you know, your side yard.
Well, just the thing.
Yeah, maybe your yard's big enough that you can pull the sides in 15 feet, then you can go up, you know? But it's Sonia, a drawing, a section drawing showing that, you know, because we've done garages with car lifts to stack two cars. And unless you get into the really large lifts, where, that are basically commercial lifts, you know, the, the platforms only go up far enough that, I mean, you could, within a 12-foot height, you can still stack two cars with no problem. So, you know, the travel distance on those lifts and then the additional, unless you're putting two minivans, and even then, it's, it's pretty close at 12 feet, so. I mean, I think that 12-foot number works for stacking two cars, so I don't see any reason to go higher.
Were any of you able to watch the board meeting where they discussed it?
I was not.
What was your walk away, if anything? Didn't find anything compelling?
No, I didn't find anything compelling.
I think the board's concern was that perhaps we need to be revisiting this in light of people having more cars, in light of people wanting to avoid causing flooding in their backyards. And so rather than go with a three-car garage, have the ability to stack cars within there so they have a minimized footprint. And if our code did not allow for that to be possible, then perhaps we should look at eliminating the sidewall height restriction to allow for that flexibility for people to do that, to minimize their footprint. But they were very explicit in that they were not looking to intend to allow people to have a second story, like our coach houses have, you know, that they want these just strictly to be for, you know, a bit of storage above your car or to be able to stack two cars. Nobody was in favor of really allowing a two-story garage, per se. But they wanted to allow for that flexibility, hence the other, hence the text amendment B, to make that allowance for that. Nobody wanted to see an 18-foot tall wall, but for those that are trying to match their house and still get the volume in there to be able to accommodate the stacked cars. They didn't want the ordinance to be too restrictive to keep that from happening.
And I would agree, but I, as I demonstrated, you could do that in 12-foot with no problem, you know?
There's another trustee who just thought there shouldn't be any maximum unless it affects public safety, get rid of a requirement.
Well, I'd say at that point, and that reminds me throughout the whole zoning code, I'd just say, do what you want. I mean, we could build, you know, the old Greek donut houses wall-to-wall on your sidewalk line, and basically the whole community could look like an urban environment where you've just got walls up to the property lines, and you're a big courtyard in the middle, and you're well protected, and you've got your battlements up there and your guns up there, and ready to shoot anybody in the street that's threatening you.
Well, there was another trustee who happens to be here, who essentially echoed what we had been talking about, that we don't want neighbors to feel like there's this huge building looming outside their window, so.
Which, which is what you would have. Like if you stood by metal lights and that sidewalk is five feet wide, you're on your property and that is even five feet away, it's, it's huge. And that's 14 feet. So I think that's, I mean, that's, that's at a commercial scale at that point, in my opinion, so.
And I guess that's what kind of brought up my whole thing, why would we even bother changing the zoning code?
Well, I'm just asking.
Other than the fact that maybe defining what the sidewall was.
Right, that's, that's all I, my.
That's what text amendment A basically is. Although there was the inclusion of the dormer restriction, which was, you know, which you guys had discussed as well.
And I thought, I mean, that's also, I think, a good clarification, the dormer restriction.
I mean, yeah, because, I mean, basically what we're allowing is you could do a three-car garage and a two-car garage footprint, you know, because you could do a lift, even with the 12-foot limitation.
So what was, I mean, I guess with what the 241 gauge original proposal was, was that a, it was a gabled roof garage?
He was exceeding the maximum height.
Why, what was, how come he couldn't accommodate the lift with the 16-foot peak height?
I don't know. He could. I drew the section for you. I mean, that, that would, that would have accommodated.
Okay.
I mean, that's what I was having trouble understanding, is why is he here? And I, I, that's why essentially that section, because that's a 12-foot top plate, and there's, you know, the cars aren't a big square box, you know? They've got a height at the front that's much lower than in the middle, and if you've got a sloped roof, there should be no reason why you can't accomplish that in 12 feet. So, and, you know, I've done it, so.
Well, it's also the fact that it's 12 feet to the, to the plate.
Just to the top plate, yeah.
So, I mean, after you start putting a pitch on it, you have a lot more room in the inside than just, it's 12 feet.
Yeah.
That's where the, so.
It's a big height.
There is, I, I, you know, I think that's why part of us are, you know, opposed to granting this variance. And I think, I still think that A would be what I'd prefer to stay with. But again, that's my opinion. I guess what I'd like to say is, you know, does anybody want to, want to make a motion?
But before we do that, just for the record, we're going to mark Sonia's memo and the accompanying materials as a bit of aid to this public hearing. And for anyone watching at home or online, the reason we haven't seen any public comment is there is no public present at this point. And before we make a motion, if you could ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. Is there a motion to close?
Second.
Okay. Meeting is officially closed for the public hearing for the garage accessory building height regulations and related definitions, so with that, can we now make a motion?
Absolutely.
Is there anybody that wants to make any type of motion?
I was going to ask two questions first.
Go ahead.
Did any other commissioners apply?
Commissioner Mendoza said he did not have any issue with either of the text amendments.
Okay.
And it's not like you're rejecting a lot of garage applications, permits? Okay. So I move that we recommend draft amendment A.
Well, one quick, so since I brought it up, could you circulate those diagrams that I forwarded to you?
Yes.
So that everyone else's understands what I've been referring to.
I thought the diagram you sent showed a 14-foot tall wall.
No, it was 12.
It was a 12-foot.
It was a 12-foot high wall. I showed one with 14, showing just, just how nuts that can be. I mean, literally, even at 12 feet with the 18-foot peak, you put in a scissors tross, you basically have a half-court basketball court, because you've got, you've got enough clearance.
Those are on your, your larger lots, only 18-foot. So it would be the 16-foot, so they would basically.
Well, 18-foot is only when you're trying to.
Trying to match, the way the code is written, you match that.
I thought the 18-foot was for so, for certain districts.
The R1AA and the R1A. So not for the R2 or the R3, which is where you get into the duplex and the multifamily lots, but in the R1A, R1AA. So either on Blackhawk or over on Maplewood where it's R1AA, either of those districts, you can get that extra couple of feet to go to 18 if you're trying to match your house.
Right.
Your house is, so roof pitch.
And Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, are you recommending that approval of option A as opposed to option B? Or do you want a separate vote on option B? I just want to make sure the message that is sent to the board is clear, that, one way or the other.
We can vote separately on both, correct?
Okay, absolutely.
All right.
That's a great idea.
Okay. So with the, the motion to accept option A, is...
She made it, right?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Sonia, do you need to take a roll?
It'd probably be a good idea. Commissioner Mateo?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Commissioner Randall?
Aye.
And Commissioner Lesniak?
Aye.
Motion passes to recommend approval of text amendment A.
I move that we vote to reject text amendment B.
Second. Sonia, vote.
All righty. Commissioner Mateo?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Commissioner Randall?
Aye.
Commissioner Lesniak?
Aye.
Okay.
So we'll make a, you'll make the motion to a recommendation of this option A?
So the recommendation for option A will be that you recommend approval of that one, and then text amendment B, your recommendation would not be a check of option B. Ultimately, it's up to them to decide which one, and both ordinances will be presented to them for discussion. And making a motion.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All right. Melody?
Voice vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Called over the regular meeting?
Yep.
I think so. Just to mark your time here real quick.